Let her know, I gotta let her know that she my white horse, she my medical. She like my baby mama, know how to take care of me, get my baby problems. You gonna regret everything, so I let her know, gotta let her know. Came through the front door, I'll be ready for. And if it's what you want, I'mma give it to you, yeah. Promise, I'mma give it to you.
Miss that smile, Lord knows I ain't seen that in awhile, but it's your style. So something must be up keeping you down. You a queen that must be heaven sent. Pray my soul, I must repent for not telling you what I meant and how I felt. Honestly, I'm used to throwing wishes in the well. My conscience tells me that I could have helped without fail. Actions speak louder than words, and that's a lesson that I learned all by myself.
Let her know, I gotta let her know that she my white horse, she my medical. She like my baby mama, know how to take care of me, get my baby problems. You gonna regret everything, so I let her know, gotta let her know. Came through the front door, I'll be ready for. And if it's what you want, I'mma give it to you, yeah. Promise, I'mma give it to you.
Feel it, baby, stresses all around us, these high ceilings, and I need it, baby. Pressure it make diamonds, I won't steal it, baby. Silent, baby, hurts to see you crying, know you trying, ain't no lying, baby. When I say I need you greedy, if I have to share you. It was me that all along did you wrong, thinking that I made you beautiful and strong. This toxicity, the death of me, I feel the day you gone. The most beautiful girl I've ever known, done.
I'll find a way to treat you better. I swear there's no one I'd like. You, you teach me to be better. My talk is cheeky, but it's doing what I do. I'll fly you to the moon. Hope I see you soon. I found a way to treat you better. No problem, I'll do it. Let her know, I gotta let her know that she my white horse.
I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And I'm gonna read this off. Welcome to March 28, 2023 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may be cause for the Chair to interrupt the Speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. Thank you. And at this point, I would like to call on Commissioner Kennedy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please stand? Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. And at this point, it's roll call.
Good evening. Commissioner Adam?
Here, finally.
Commissioner Acosta Galan?
Here.
Vice Chair Twining?
Here.
Chair Pelman?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments?
We have no one sign up to speak on items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing items. Next, we have a public hearing item. It is tentative tract map TTM number 19174 and conditional use permit CUP number 22-021, Brandywine Town Homes. And at this point, before I gavel for the public hearing, I would like to ask the Commissioners to state your disclosures regarding this item. And we'll start with Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. Yeah, I met with the applicant with Commissioner Wood, and I also visited the site.
I did visit the site.
I too met with the developer and visited the site.
I visited the site and I had a meeting with the applicant and Commissioner Adam.
No disclosures on my end.
I visited the site and I spoke with staff. Previously, when it was before us, I had sent in questions, and I re-upped those.
And I visited the site and I also spoke with the developer in a Zoom meeting. And I think that's it. Okay?
Okay, staff, do we have a presentation at this time?
Yes, Principal Planner Ricky Ramos will be giving the presentation this evening.
Perfect.
Thank you. I want to first begin by mentioning that there is late communication for this item in the form of a couple of letters as well as the staff slideshow and the applicant slideshow. And they've been uploaded online for access. So the project site in this case is located at 7225 Edinger Avenue. It has a general plan designation of mixed use with a specific plan overlay and a zoning designation of beach and Edinger corridors, specific plan. It is surrounded by Golden West College to the west and north, commercial development to the east, and multifamily across the street from Edinger. The applicant is requesting several entitlement applications. The first one is a tentative tract map to subdivide a 5.6 acre site for condominium purposes. A conditional use permit to develop a project with 129 attached three-story townhomes up to 40 feet tall with no commercial component. The staff report mentions 130 unit project, but the applicant has submitted revised plans reducing the unit count to 129, and that was to accommodate the required public open space. The units range from about 1,100 to 2,500 square feet, two to four bedrooms with two-car garages. The request also includes a transfer of up to 129 dwelling units from Beach Boulevard to Edinger Avenue within the specific plan. The project is compatible with the mixed-use character of the area. The three-story townhomes are in keeping with the character of other nearby multifamily projects that are four and five stories. It's proposed as a density of 23 units per acre. In comparison, the other projects nearby range from 39 to 60 to 100 units per acre. The site is near employment, entertainment, services, and transit. The request to eliminate the commercial component will not affect access to goods and services. There are plenty of retail opportunities in the area as well as a regional mall. This is the proposed site plan. The main access is off a main drive-al off Edinger. It includes what is called a classic boulevard, which is basically public frontage improvements with sidewalk, angled parking, and landscaping. Two buildings on Edinger, along Edinger are set back 41 feet. There is a 40 to 50-foot setback from the east lot line next to the commercial development. And there is required open space proposed facing Edinger. This would be on the lower-left corner of the site plan. There is existing reciprocal access between the subject site and the adjacent car wash and retail center to the east. And it's depicted on this plan here in the middle. There's a call-out indicating where this reciprocal access is. And you can see it's proposed to be eliminated and will be blocked by the existing units. There is, however, a new access lane proposed, again called out on this plan, for the car wash and retail development that provides better circulation and also addresses the stacking to make sure it happens on-site. Currently, some of the stacking happens on what is the Brandywine Project Site at the moment. But with this new plan, the stacking will be entirely within the car wash property, which is what's required. Reciprocal access is required between commercial properties, but it is not required between a commercial and a residential property. However, it should still be noted that there is a frontage road that continues from the car wash retail property and will be continued onto the Brandywine property to provide that access from one site to the next. The proposed townhomes are two stories of living space over a first-floor garage with a small amount of living space. It's designed to provide visual interest through facade breaks, roofline variation, architectural treatment, colors, and materials. The buildings along Edinger are further enhanced by additional wall offsets and materials. This is the proposed elevation facing Golden West College. Note that the project is proposing false blackout windows at the second and third floors to maintain the privacy at Golden West College. In addition, the applicant has revised the landscaping plan to show a green screen hedge along the majority of the northern and western property lines that at maturity could grow up to 30 feet. Project complies with key zoning requirements. To highlight a few, for instance, the maximum building height permitted is four stories. This project only proposes three stories. It complies as well with setbacks and open space requirements. The specific plan currently permits what's called the maximum amount of net development, or MAND, of 2,100 units. Of the 2,100, 1,375 is designated on Edinger and the remaining 725 on Beach Boulevard, Beach Boulevard corridor. 1,900 units have been constructed, leaving a balance of 200 units along the Beach Boulevard corridor, and the applicant is requesting a transfer of 129 units to Edinger. This transfer is permitted in the specific plan since the applicant has submitted some preliminary infrastructure studies that have been reviewed by our public work staff, and the applicant will be responsible for all required improvements to serve their project. The specific plan EIR analyzed an increase of 4,500 dwelling units, and that would be 1,745 units on Edinger and 2,755 units on Beach. And the transfer results in an increase of 1,504 dwelling units on Edinger, which is below the threshold identified. In addition, this transfer is consistent with general plan goals and policies. The applicant is entitled to one concession under the state density bonus law by meeting the city's affordable housing requirement of 10% on-site. Concession requested is to reduce the required space between buildings from 20 feet to a minimum of 14 feet 9 inches between residential buildings and 10 feet to a common area building. Concession reduces the per-unit construction cost, making the project financially feasible. There are no waivers requested. This project complies with the reduced parking standards in the state density bonus law. The first column identifies the different unit types from two to four units. Second column identifies the unit count for each floor plan. Second, the last column identifies the required parking based on the unit mix under the state density bonus law. The total is 277 parking spaces. And the last column identifies what the applicant is providing, which is 314 spaces. So there is an excess of parking proposed. Staff is recommending approval of this project based on consistency with the general plan, its goals, and the policies, compatibility with the area, consistency with the specific plan and the zoning subdivision ordinance, except for the reduced parking and the concession that is permitted under the state density bonus law and will also add to the city's housing stock. I want to conclude by mentioning that there is a minor modification that's recommended under condition 6B of the conditional use permit. The updated condition has been uploaded online for access by the commission and the public. And that ends my staff report.
Are you done? No? Is he done?
That is my staff report.
Okay, thank you. Do Commissioners have any questions at this point?
Yes, I have some questions.
Okay, so we'll start with Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Romals, for the presentation. First and foremost, I want to thank the applicant and the developer, especially Angela and Alex, for reaching out to me. I didn't have an opportunity to meet with them. But overall, my question to staff, the first one is with regards to the RENA numbers, so does 100% of the units, are those allocated towards RENA numbers?
Correct, they count towards both the moderate income level, the 10%, as well as the market rate.
Okay. Yeah, because there was some confusion to some of the local residents who were only allocating the moderate income and lower income. So with that being said, the second one is regarding, you know, I think we received a letter of communication from an attorney regarding the easement. So it looks like the agreement acknowledges that the current circulation that is in use currently is only up until the current developer decides to develop the site, which is what's happening now. So are you aware of the developer and the city being involved in any communication between the next-door neighbor, so to speak?
Yes, I've had conversations with Jeff Burksma. Jeff Burksma was the architect for the adjacent car wash and commercial building, and he's also part of the operations. And he did express concern about losing the reciprocal access. But I explained the basis for the staff recommendation that overall, the new access, the new fire lane, is a far superior circulation system. And in addition, again, the benefit of moving the stacking from what is the Brandywine Project Site onto the car wash site as well. There is a condition on the car wash, when it was entitled a few years ago, that identified a requirement that the classic boulevard, with the angled parking, the drive-al in the sidewalk and landscaping, is to continue from the car wash site to the Brandywine Site, and that that is to be accommodated with development of this project site, which is what we're trying to implement.
Okay. So there's been proactive communication between all the parties involved?
Last week, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That concludes my comments for now.
Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, my question was along the lines of Commissioner Rodriguez. Is the easement actually going to be abandoned, since there is one that is currently recorded?
I don't think there's a need to abandon it. The exhibit in that easement incorporates the continuation of the classic boulevard. So really, in my mind, it allows us to implement the plan that we have in place to eliminate the existing access and continue it along the classic boulevard.
Okay, that's all I have for you.
Any other Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Kennedy?
So the first question I had is on the attachment number one, where it references, basically, it says, the first sentence says, "The Planning Commission fines..." I would have, it's tied to being exempt from CEQA. So this, we're the Planning Commission now. I would imagine, is that referencing back in 2015 when they did the EIR and everything for the BECSP? Where it says, "The Planning Commission fines..."
Correct, yeah. There is a program EIR that was processed back in 2008 that covered the specific plan. But there is also language in the CEQA guidelines that if you have a residential project that is proposed in a specific plan, then that project is exempt from CEQA because an original CEQA analysis was done.
Thank you. So my secondary question on that is, that was quite some time ago, 2015, when the EIR was done and, you know, the findings for CEQA. Is there any length of duration where it stays in its recommendations? Things have changed, you know, I would say dramatically in the last decade or so, population-wise and all the different things that may affect it. So this is more a question out of just procedural curiosity.
I'm not aware of a time limit for using a program EIR. But to address your concern further, we did ask the applicant to submit some additional technical studies to kind of support the conclusion that there are no impacts that need to be addressed any further than what was done before.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? No, hearing that? Oh, yes, Commissioner Wood, I mean, Adam.
I know there was some discussion back and forth between the applicant and the police training component of Golden West Campus of that. I didn't see a letter of opposition. So have those issues been resolved to the satisfaction of both parties?
That is our understanding. We did reach out to Golden West College to confirm, but they did not respond. But our understanding is that the applicant has had conversations with Golden West College. They showed them the plan without the windows on the second and third stories, and that apparently addresses their concern.
Thank you.
Commissioner, yeah, Kennedy?
You know, I did have one other question. I mean, I actually have quite a few. I don't know if it's the time to go through all of them. But so on item two, on the suggested conditions for approval on the attachment, where it says, "The tentative tract map shall not be approved by the City Council until an affordable housing agreement has been approved by the City Council." Is that something that's still pending? And if so, what would happen if they did not approve an affordable housing agreement? Would that have any bearing?
So that agreement probably hasn't been initiated yet, but it's something that the applicant and city staff will have to work on once this project is entitled. But pursuant to that condition, we really cannot proceed with the final map until we have that affordable housing agreement in place.
Is there, is it scheduled, you know, is it up for a vote at some point? Or is it still kind of ambiguous?
It hasn't been initiated yet. All it is is basically essentially memorializing that 10% of the units will be moderate units, moderate income units.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Nope? Okay. I have one. Actually, thank you for answering the CEQA question. The other one that I just want to point out that since Huntington Beach with the rains and everything have had some trees falling. So I did ask the developer what kind of trees they planned on using, and they said it was an Indian Laurel, is a very bushy tree, 25-foot tall. And that would be to create more of a barrier between the proposed units and the community college. And so I just wanted to point that out. And I think that's it, unless somebody else has any questions? Nope? Okay. So at this point, I'll gavel. The public hearing is now open, and we will hear from the community now, speakers.
Okay. We have the following speakers. Please come down and line up at the microphones. Lindsay Ortega, Eric Lachelle, Brett Blanchard, and Jeff Burksma.
Good afternoon. Hello, Chairman Pelman and fellow members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time today. My name is Lindsay Ortega, and I am presenting on behalf of Brandywine Homes. I'd like to start first with thanking city staff for all of their work on this project. Oh, thank you. We've really appreciated their attention to detail and their responsiveness and professionalism throughout this entire process. Brandywine Homes and the design team have worked immensely over the last few years to put together a great project for your consideration. And we are really excited to be here today to share the details with you. Brandywine Homes is a family-owned residential builder based in Irvine that specializes in infill development while respecting the heritage values and architectural integrity of the existing community. The company has built over 85 small and mid-sized communities in the Southern California region over the last two decades. And the founder and owner, Jim Barisic, is also here in the audience to watch this project being presented to you. Staff provided a thorough overview of our proposal in their presentation, so I'll try not to repeat too much of the information that they've already provided to you. Brandywine is proposing a 129-unit townhome community on a 5.62-acre lot in the Beach Edinger corridor specific plan, with 10% of those units being reserved for moderate-income households. This proposal includes a conditional use permit to remove and eliminate the commercial component, a tentative tract map, and a density bonus concession. And I have here a short video that we'd like to show you that represents the project itself, and we feel like it really represents and brings the project to life. Let's see. So this is a depiction of the classic boulevard along Edinger that was referenced in the staff presentation. And then inclusive of this project is a public park that will be available to the general public but maintained by the HOA. Dog waste or animal waste bags will be there, and it will be maintained. And so this is that park. It's about 6,500 square feet. Brandywine has proposed landscaping throughout the entire project to make the driveways and access alleyways very inviting to their neighborhood and to the community that will be living in these townhomes. This is the center of the project, which includes community amenities that are available to the townhome community. In addition to the public open space, Brandywine will also be providing private open space, which is what we're seeing here. And then again, in addition to that private open space that's available to the entire community, to the residential community, there's also private balconies and private patio spaces for each unit. The proposed building's modern aesthetic emphasizes clean lines and geometric shapes by incorporating natural building materials such as a faux wood horizontal siding and a neutral color palette. High-quality materials and landscaping is proposed throughout the project. And then as the project planner mentioned, Brandywine worked closely with Golden West College to address their privacy concerns related to the units that are located along the shared alleyway. And Brandywine modified the floor plan and worked really closely with their architect so that they could move the floor plans around and allow for faux windows along that entire elevation. I'm sorry, along the second and third floor elevations. A lot of thought and planning went into designing the project to ensure that the project complies with the requirements of the specific plan and which implements the required off-site improvements along Edinger. The project reserves 13 units for moderate-income households and will contribute over $4.5 million in school, park, and city impact fees. We are really proud of this project and excited to move this project into the next phase. Thank you for your time. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. We also have our project architect, our civil engineer, our traffic consultant, and then members of Brandywine team that are here to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, next speaker?
Eric Lachelle?
Thank you.
Brett Blanchard? I'm sorry, Brett Blanchard. Jeff Burksma, please come down.
Good evening. I don't have any...
Good evening. I don't have any of those awesome renderings or anything like that, but as an HB resident, I've always been kind of against the high-density housing. And now, as the owner of Stumpy's Hatchet House, it's kind of hitting home for us, so.
Sir, can you only give us your name, please?
Sorry, Eric Lachelle. My bad. One of the things to kind of consider is just a lot of residents in Huntington Beach really don't want any of the high-density housing. There's less and less commercials and for small businesses like ourselves, as we've been looking around, possibly need to find a new home, it's really hard for us to find stuff like that. So it's just something to think about. And depending on how you vote, we're going to lose a lot of unique services, like the comedy club next to us, at the rec room, laser tag, arcade, the arcade, a lot of family entertainment, a bowling alley, and then our hatchet throwing. So and, you know, we've been, we do a lot of stuff for the community. We give away free wood. We do a lot of fundraising there. We donate to a lot of the local GoFundMes and stuff like that. It's just something that I just wanted to put that out there, just something to think about that you guys are going to be voting on. And that's pretty much all my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name's Brett Blanchard. Madam Chair, chairperson, and Commissioner, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm one of the partners of Gothard Express Partners, the long-term groundless E on the northeast corner of Gothard and Ettinger. My four brothers and I attended and played football at Edison High School and grew up here, and it was our dream of ours to open up a small business here in our hometown. We, in fact, did that when we opened H2Go on the corner of Gothard and Ettinger, and when we came before this body about nine years ago for approvals. As you've heard, we've had a reciprocal access agreement with this property in question that was required by staff at the time of approval. We were informed about a year ago that Brandywine was looking at potentially developing the neighboring property, and we got the impression that we would be seeing the plan before it was submitted to staff, especially in light of the plan being proposed would be greatly detrimental to our business and our 12,000 Huntington Beach Club members. And the other two businesses on site, the Big Catch Restaurant and the Better Water Store, we were just informed by public notice on Thursday. So by way of the staff report, we were notified that we'd be losing our main access off Ettinger. Our sign would be removed, and there'd be other improvements to be installed. We're not sure who pays for that, or how that works out, the cost, and how it's coordinated with us. So we just want to put the commission on notice that this is a little bit of a fire drill for us to kind of get notified now at the last minute to figure out what we're to do and how we plan it. So with that said, we like to hear more information on how that all works and how we can not make it so detrimental to our business and the other businesses, because there's just too much at stake. So we just thought it was a little bit rushed planning on our part. So anyways, that's, I just wanted to let the commission know about that. We thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, please. Next speaker?
Hi, Jeff Burksma, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I'm also a partner with Brett Blanchard, and I was the architect for the development that includes the restaurant and retail and the car wash itself. So I've been through this drill and was before this body, when we got it approved. Originally, there was some access off of Ettinger in our initial proposal, and then that changed, and they wanted to use a common driveway. So that required the reciprocal easement. And also, there is reciprocal easements between commercial properties, which would not be applicable when you have residential to this. But as Brett said, that we were notified of this on Thursday. I talked to the applicant on Friday, and I talked at length with the city on Friday. So there was no communication between the two properties, and that reciprocal access exists legally. So there are just questions about how we go forward and become good neighbors, and we're not against the development whatsoever. This is in no way high-density housing. 20 units an acre is very small compared to all the high-density housing that's around it across, both across Ettinger and Gothard. But it sounds like there was coordination between the development and Golden West College, but not really with us. So I don't know if there's some kind of condition that the applicant puts its best efforts into working with us. It really will affect not only the car wash business, but really affects the restaurant business and the small water business that's there, too. So I'm not sure what kind of condition that could be, but we're not really opposed to the development at all. We think we would be good neighbors, and we just wish that something could be worked out better in the planning aspect of this. So I'm available for questions if any of the commissioners have anything for us. Thank you.
We have additional speakers.
Okay.
Please come down to each microphone. Carissa DiStefano and David Trotter.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Carissa DiStefano, and I'm here on behalf of the Building Industry Association of Southern California, Orange County Chapter. Thank you for taking the time to consider our input on this project. At the BIA, our mission is to champion housing as the foundation of vibrant and sustainable communities. There is no denying California is in the midst of a housing crisis caused by chronic supply and demand imbalance. Our state is in dire need of new housing. This project responds by providing 130 new homes while perfectly matching the character of the community. On behalf of our members, we urge you to support this project. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair Pillman and members of the Planning Commission. My name's David Trotter. I am the Executive Vice President of Freeway Industrial Park. FIP is the owner of the Ettinger property, has longstanding roots in Huntington Beach, dating back to even before the company was founded in 1960 by my grandfather, Johnny Murdy Jr., who we knew as Dats growing up. That was the only thing. We couldn't pronounce granddad, so we called him Dats. And I've sent you a letter previously. My grandfather was a great benefactor of the community. He donated the land for Murdy Park, donated land from his farmhouse on Heil to the Methodist Church that's there today. And I'm joined here, actually, by my older brother, Jack, actually, John Murdy Trotter. That's his namesake. And we're very much in support of the Brandywine project. The, I want to talk a little bit about the Gothard Express situation. We agree with the points that were made earlier, both by the planning staff and by Brandywine regarding the proposed elimination of the reciprocal access way. And I think the key point here is this, and I think it's important. The city made that reciprocal access way between the two properties an express condition of approval of the car wash CUP. And at that time, the city knew, and at the time the city did this, everyone knew and understand and understood. We certainly did. Gothard Express did. FIP did. And the city officials did. That redevelopment of the adjacent shopping center was likely in the future, and that as a development of, on the Ettinger Avenue within the, you know, the specific planned corridor, we would have to comply with those classic California Boulevard requirements as it was extended. And it is correct that you don't have a requirement for reciprocal access between commercial and residential development. So the access was actually a condition of approval, and I would urge you to ask staff a little bit more about that original CUP condition number 6C. I want to talk about, a little bit about that with you, because it was something that was very, very clear in the approvals, that this was going to happen, and that someday we would be at this podium talking about a project next door. What condition of approval number 6C says, among other things, is that the form and content of the reciprocal access way document was made subject to approval by the Planning Commission and city attorney as to form and content. That's not the typical private access way between two property owners. And then it also ends with the following sentence, which I think is very significant here. "The recorded agreement shall remain in effect in perpetuity, except as modified and/or rescinded pursuant to an expressed written approval of the City of Huntington Beach." May I close?
Go ahead. Thank you.
So I just want to say that a couple of things. One is, it's pretty clear that the city plainly reserved their right to modify or rescind or terminate that reciprocal easement agreement as being proposed here and as warranted by a change in circumstances. And the ILS proposal by Brandywine clearly constituted that kind of a changed circumstance. And of course, it's all being designed in accordance with city standards. And so with just a little tag on on that, it was suggested by Mr. Ramos that it wasn't necessary to do anything with the reciprocal access agreement, just leave it there. I would suggest that the more appropriate thing from the city's perspective would be that you would want to make sure there was no ambiguity or doubt on this subject, and you would want there to be some kind of a condition that this reciprocal access agreement, this recorded agreement, would in fact be rescinded in accordance with the authority that the city reserved to itself when it approved the car wash CUP back in 2014 and 2015. I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of Freeway Industrial Park, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further speakers?
We have no additional speakers. Sign just up.
Okay. Then at this point, I will close the public hearing. And at this point, it's time for the commissioners to deliberate. And I would like to ask from the commissioners if they have any comments or deliberations.
Is it appropriate now to comment amongst us, or also, you know, there's, I have a few more questions now that the presentation's been done.
You could certainly direct questions back to staff.
Okay. May I, Chairman? Or am I out of order?
A little bit. That's okay. Commissioner Acosta Galvin?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to ask about the reciprocal access agreement. So that was for the CUP for the car wash. And is that correct, that the city maintains the right to rescind that?
Correct. The condition that's referred to by Mr. Trotter does say at the end that it remains in effect except as modified or rescinded pursuant to a permission by the City of Huntington Beach.
And is there a reason that we wouldn't want to rescind it? It wasn't previously proposed?
Well, there's an exhibit in the easement. It's Exhibit B. And this easement is part of the Lake Communication packet that you, that we uploaded today. And that Exhibit B shows an area of off-site adjoining construction, and it references that improvements can be made, particularly in terms of the site being, this project site being redeveloped and continuing the classic boulevard frontage improvement. And that diagram includes a portion of the car wash property that would have to be modified to implement that classic boulevard extension. So I think it can be argued that this easement, in a way, permits the continuation of that classic boulevard.
I see. And the changes that would happen on the car wash property, would that be the applicant putting those, employing those changes, or would that be the property owner?
It is the, it's Brandywine. In fact, the applicant would like to respond to that if you want them to come down and answer that question directly.
Oh, yeah, that would be great.
Yes, in response to that question that came up, I believe, from the H2Go owners, Brandywine would be working with the property owner and would be paying for the entirety of the improvements to make the improvements in the classic boulevard, Ettinger off-site improvements and onsite.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a question from City Attorney Bigliotta on rescinding the easement and/or making sure the easement no longer exists post-development. What is your opinion?
So, good question, and I will defer it back to Ricky, but I'll answer it maybe in a little bit of a different way. The easement currently depicted on the map shows, that area shows both easements, I suppose. It encompasses both, both pattern, or both traffic patterns, if you will. So I don't think the easement needs to be rescinded.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the applicant's responsibility for those improvements in front of the car wash, is that noted in one of the conditions somewhere?
I apologize, but I missed your question. Could you repeat it, please?
Sure. In regards to the applicant's obligation to do the improvements in front of the car wash, is that in one of the conditions on the applicant's map?
It is not a condition of the Brandywine project. There is a condition that, before they demo the building, that they address the proposed drive aisle, which would lead to a loss of two parking spaces. But there's no specific condition about payment by the applicant for the improvements.
Okay. So what forces them to do it?
Well, it's the only way, the only way that it would happen is if Brandywine were to pay for it, and they need it for the project to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add to that? We could certainly craft a condition or add a condition that essentially memorializes what the applicant just said at the podium in regards to coordinating and paying for those improvements.
If I could just follow up, just so I'm clear, and Ricky, correct me if I'm wrong. Again, the area that's depicted in that easement, the reciprocal access agreement, contains, again, the both, both paths of travel, right? So if you revoke it or get rid of it, then you've got no easement, right? And Ricky, is that accurate?
Correct. I'm looking at the exhibit right now, and there is an area shown that encompasses a big portion of that shared property line, includes both the existing as well as the continuation of the classic boulevard. So you're correct, Mike.
You done? Yeah? Okay. Commissioner Kennedy, please.
Thank you. So it's clear that there's certain stipulated rights to rescind the easement. But my question is, number one, in fairness to the car wash owners, it sounds like there was a lack of notice or oversight, so procedurally, that seems a little bit askew. Secondly, although the applicant is stated as being obligated to pay for the improvements, do the car wash owners get any input, or is it, is it real strict in regards to what improvements have to be made on behalf of the car wash? Is there any input that they're allowed to contribute to that improvement?
There's going to have to be some coordination between Brandywine, the property owner, and the car wash. But otherwise, this improvement is being driven by the Brandywine project. And again, they would have to pay for it to implement it in order for their project to move forward.
Understood. But without knowing exactly what the improvement is, does the car wash owner know what the improvement would need to be? Are they familiar with that?
Correct, yes. So the key improvements are shown on the exhibit that I presented to you, and it's attached to the project plans that are attached to the staff report. It basically shows that a new fire lane access lane will connect the car wash to Ettinger Avenue, and it would lead to a loss of two parking spaces. And in order to implement the classic boulevard extension from the car wash property to the in order for that drive out to continue on. And perhaps the signage, as the applicant had indicated, might have to be relocated.
Yeah, okay. I wanted to address that. So thank you for touching on that. As a business, signage is super important. So you would hope that they, if they lose that easement, which it sounds like they will by, by stipulation, that they have either some input or they're at least satisfied with the end result of the signage because, you know, they've spent a lot of money to develop that corner as well, so.
Correct, yes. So yeah, will be, it will have to be a lot of coordination after, if this project were to be approved by the commission, there's going to be a lot of coordination at the permit and construction stage. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez, please.
Yeah, one, one question for city staff or even the applicant. Typically, when there's displacement of residents in a residential area for a new development, the applicant has to pay relocation costs. I'm not too familiar with commercial and I do want to address just the small business owners that are, that are in the room and that are in their surrounding area. Is there any relocation benefits being offered to, to the small businesses there? Or does the city get involved with assisting in any way, shape or form?
Yeah, so from the city's perspective, we do not have a code requirement or a condition that requires what you're referencing. But it's a question that we might post to the property owner in case they've had conversations with their current tenants.
Cool. And then, that's it for me for now.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy again.
I'm sorry, I forgot to withdraw. I'm, I'm done, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Twining.
Twining.
Twining. I keep pointing to get, see it the other way.
Well, first off, having heard a few of these in my three-month career here on the planning commission, it sounds to me like you guys are going to be great neighbors, number one, because you both kind of like each other's pro, you know, you like the project. There's certain things about it that bother you a little bit. But I, I have a question either to staff or to the, the car wash people, including their architect, in that does the rescinding of the reciprocal access agreement going to have a material effect on yours and other businesses, the restaurant, the water company, in light of the gain of 300-plus new residents and their cars, having a great car, car wash that I use right next door to them? Will it increase your business? That's it. I've just, I think it'd be kind of cool to have a great car wash and a great restaurant and pure water real close to me. And will the, will that recip, will the rescinding of that reciprocal access agreement materially affect cars' ability to get into your car wash, the restaurant and the water place?
Commissioner, if I could just, just jump in just for one second. I don't think anybody's suggesting, at least not at this point, to rescind that agreement. They're just moving, kind of moving the lanes of travel.
Okay. That's what I mean.
Again, please correct me if I'm wrong in making that statement.
That's what I meant.
Confirmed? Yeah? What? Okay. Next, will be Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. So I had a couple of questions, one for the applicant. What would be the nearest open parking space if somebody were to want to go to the restaurant or pick up the water? I don't think anybody wants to walk through the car wash themselves, but where could they park to ac, is there a place they could park to access if the restaurant parking lot was full or they wanted to go to the water store? Is there something along the frontage?
So I don't know if, it's probably on your iPads, but not sure if you can see it. If you looked at the bottom along Edinger, on the right-hand side, there is about, I believe it's 20 parking spaces that are located along Edinger. And that is a continuation from the car wash. If you were to enter from Edinger onto the car wash property, that would continue on either entering into the car wash or continuing on to the Brandywine project. So it's, it's steps.
Those would be public, just open parking, correct?
They, well.
Or the guests?
They're not, they're not really restricted to guests only because the, the accessway will continue on and there won't be any signage that says only Brandywine residents can park here. And then the other thing to keep in mind is, as I mentioned, there is an excess of 37 additional parking spaces than what is required under state law.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is if, so the process is the applicant needs to work with the car wash owners. If they can't come to an agreement, what's the process? I mean, what, where does it go if there was a, a big blow up? How does that get resolved?
So we've worked, may I? So during this entire process, we have been working with the city specifically to address a lot of their concerns that they had related to car wash stacking onto Edinger and then fire access. So we have worked very closely with Public Works to propose an access and redesigned entryway into the car wash area in order to address a lot of those health, safety concerns that the city has, has requested. So a lot of that's been somewhat designed. We will be working with the car wash to discuss when that's occurring and, and exactly, you know, how we can make it as, less, least impactful on their business. But for the most part, I think that city staff has been pretty vocal on what they'd like to see in terms of access and implementing that classic boulevard design.
Thank you.
Okay. I have some clarification for questions. And so it sounds like the, that the H2 water is going to be losing two parking spaces? Is that correct? Yes?
That, that is correct.
And do they get compensated for that or how does that work?
There's no compensation for it, but as mentioned, the classic boulevard is going to continue along the frontage. There is additional parking there and it's not restricted to just the Brandywine residents to use that parking space.
Okay. And then, in, in general, how does the city notify businesses of situations such as this? What's the process?
Correct. So we asked the applicant to provide a, a set of mailing labels that encompasses a 500-foot radius from the project site, including property owners and tenants. And we send that notice out 10 days ahead of the hearing. So to add further to that, this project was initially scheduled for planning commission hearing back in December.
That's true, okay.
And we sent a notice back then as well. That was a few months ago.
Okay. And then you already answered who pays for the changes and I think that's about it for me. Okay. So at this point, okay, Commissioner Kennedy.
Matt had made that suggestion about basically memorializing that condition, supporting what Mr., from FIP, I don't want to mispronounce his name or misstate it, yes, Mr. Trotter, regarding the payment. You, you would kind of suggest maybe memorializing that in a condition that we could add to the documentation. I would, I don't know if I need to make a motion, but I, I think that would be prudent and fair. They're willing to pay for it. I'm sure the car washes would like to have that memorialized as a condition. Not that they wouldn't do it otherwise, but what's, how do we bring that about?
Sure. So the mechanism to do that would be in making a motion for the project, you would add that specific condition.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we would add the condition, just simply stating that, reinforcing what Mr. Trotter said regarding payment of the improvements for the car wash.
Just, just as a point of order, typically you, you, you would, you would make the motion to approve the project with the added condition.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to improve the project.
Wait, hold it.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry, okay. Is there no other commissioners speaking? Okay. So, oh, yes.
May I comment on that?
Yes.
I would just caution, or at least I would like to get an understanding of some flexibility on that condition because if, for instance, there is a situation where we're not able to come to an understanding, I would hate for that to prevent the development of being able to move forward. So if there could be maybe some, some flexibility in the language that states perhaps that to the, to the satisfaction of the community development director of something to that order, so that they have that responsibility to, to maybe make modifications if necessary.
Yeah, I'm not calling for some, you know, overstated guideline and maybe a gentleman's agreement is all that's needed. Maybe it's not, I don't know. But I, I would just say something, we're a neutral party, makes the decision, but just memorializing what Mr. Reproport had said in regards to the payment. And I'm not stating that, hey, if we say no as the car wash guys, everything goes kaput. Not at all. But just some general, basic language protecting the interest of both parties with a neutral arbitrator to decide that's fair.
Yeah, Brandywine would be amenable to something like that.
Yeah. I have a question. How do you, how do you, what is the process to have them come together from the city's point of view? At what point do you say, okay, they both agree on this? How, how does that happen?
Well, it's a two-step approval process. So tonight is really the zoning entitlement process and then they'll move into the construction phase. And that's typically when this kind of coordination would happen. And if it was agreeable to the commission, you know, there could be some general condition that prior to the issue, it's a building permit, they coordinate with the adjacent property to inform them of the changes and that they're responsible for payment of those improvements. We would, of course, be verifying that through the building permit process when we're reviewing the plans that would have to be issued. So there's sort of a checks and balance there. But that way, the city and both, the car wash and the applicant are all informed of what's going on and it's understood from the record that the Brandywine project is responsible for the payment of those improvements.
So could you recommend some wording for that?
I'll have to remember what I just said, which is sometimes difficult. I don't know. I, I would look over to, I don't know if you have any.
I don't. I think I liked your, I liked your motion. I think that as far as the payment goes, I don't know that there needs to be like a, a bilateral agreement, right? It's the, Brandywine's agreeing to pay for it. It's, I suppose, the only, the only agreement that, that, what would they need to come to agreement on?
I, if I might say, I think the issue is not the payment, it's the agreement for what is going to be done, the physical stuff that's going to be done.
Physical alteration to the property. I mean, I, I think, is that not already depicted on the plans?
You know, both projects are required to have the classic boulevard treatment, correct, Ricky? So, I mean, it's not really a coordination of what it's supposed to look like. The zoning regulations prescribe that. I think it's more coordination of the how and when in terms of, you know, and that's typically like the construction management. I'm thinking out loud here so that prior to approval, we could have a condition, I'll throw this out as a suggestion, prior to the approval of a construction management plan, the city will ensure that the neighboring property has been coordinated with in terms of timing, scheduling, impacts, et cetera.
Does that sound okay?
I'm, I move that.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just kidding. But yeah, that sounds fine. I think that sounds fine. I think we just want to be clear that, again, Brandywine's paying for it.
Yes.
The, the plans themselves are at least more than, more than set forth in concept. There's, there's a plan already in place and, and that's not going to be deviated from and that, again, the, the property owners will work with the car wash and make sure that everything else is coordinated.
Okay. You got that, Commissioner Kennedy?
That's fine. And again, I'm sure we have two sets of professional business associates. It, it's just not depicted anywhere in writing. That's it. Like somebody says, hey, we're going to pay for it, probably good enough for all parties involved, it's just not depicted anywhere in writing as Matt brought up. So simple language, probably not needed, but just to keep it on the record.
And I, and I think we can review the record and, and if, if the commission is amenable, we can craft the condition as generally described by Matt and I during the meeting.
That's more than fine with me, trying to make sure both parties are well represented, that's all.
Okay. Now it's time for, if we have a motion on the item?
I'd like to make a motion to get the language crafted, simple, easy, direct.
Can, can we also make a motion to accept recommended action with Commissioner? Is it okay to make a motion for recommended action with your comments?
Yes, yes, please do.
Okay. And there's, is there a second?
Just verify, we're recommending approval of the project with a modification, correct? Just want to make.
Yeah, yes. Okay, so.
Can I just, how about I, I'm going to just make a motion to approve tentative track map. 19174, conditional use permit number 22021. Find it exempt from SEQA and approve the map with modifications regarding the coordination between the applicant and the car wash owner on the physical improvements to be paid for by Brandywine consistent with the exhibits that are already in place.
So is that the second? Because I believe Commissioner.
That's the first.
Okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
I, I can second that. I mean, yes.
Okay, so do you want to make the second, Commissioner Kennedy?
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Okay. I know. Yeah, we have to do a hand vote. It's not coming up. Oh, there we go. Okay.
I'm going to call for you.
Yeah, we're going to call for the vote then. I'll, okay.
We have all ayes, motion carries.
Thank you.
The decision of the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include reasons for such an appeal, any required fee, and shall be filed with the City of Huntington Beach City Clerk's office.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we have, on the consent calendar, we have the minutes for February 14th. And are there any edits or comments? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the.
I'll second.
Okay. So Commissioner Wood made the motion. It's not showing up on the screen.
Okay, who seconded?
Okay.
Rodriguez.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Give me a moment, please.
Okay. Actually, I should say, please vote.
Commissioner Adam? Oh, sorry. Okay, we have six ayes. Commissioner Adam Abstain's motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Non-public hearing items, we have none. So moving on to planning items. Next on the agenda are planning items. Can staff provide a report?
Absolutely. So first, I just wanted to highlight, since we just experienced it twice, there is a slight delay when you call for the vote where I think your screens appear to stay probably blank. And to just, just know that you got to let the system, you have to pause for a second until.
Okay.
The planning commission secretary gets it queued up for the actual vote to be recorded and there's, there's a built-in lag, so. But we're appreciative that it's working this evening, so that's, that's progress, right? So in terms of items, just wanted a reminder, we have four commissioners that had registered for the planning commission. You should have received an email earlier, the Planning Commission Academy. We sent our reminder earlier this week, so just a reminder, make you aware of that. Earlier in the month, Chair Pelman's commission assignments were emailed out to everyone as we didn't have a, a meeting. And I passed out a hard copy as well, so those have all been distributed. All the liaisons for the different committees are aware too and will be contacting you with upcoming agenda items, et cetera. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention is we don't currently have any items anticipated for the next meeting, so that will likely be canceled. But when we adjourn this evening, we should still continue to the next meeting. And that's all I had.
Thank you.
So even though we don't have any.
The Planning Commission Secretary gets it queued up for the actual vote to be recorded, and there's a built-in lag, so. But we're appreciative that it's working this evening, so that's progress, right? So in terms of items, just wanted a reminder, we have four commissioners that had registered for the Planning Commission. You should have received an email earlier, Planning Commission Academy. We sent our reminder earlier this week, so just a reminder, make you aware of that. Earlier in the month, Chair Pelman's commission assignments were emailed out to everyone as we didn't have a meeting, and I passed out a hard copy as well, so those have all been distributed. All the liaisons for the different committees are aware, too, and will be contacting you with upcoming agenda items, et cetera. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention is, we don't currently have any items anticipated for the next meeting, so that will likely be canceled. But when we adjourn this evening, we should still continue to the next meeting. And that's all I had.
Thank you.
So even though we don't have any projects in the next meeting, do we have any in the pipeline?
We have several city-initiated, long-range projects that are, one of which will likely be the next project that could come before you, but applicant-driven project, we don't have one that's in the near term coming before the commission.
Okay, thank you. Month, so the fourth Wednesday would be tomorrow, if it's the on month. Do you know what month is on and off? It doesn't say here. It's the southeast?
I, I think actually, let me look to see what the coordinator is for that.
An agenda should be emailed out, a week prior to every meeting. So, since you're the liaison, you should get an agenda prior to the meeting at your city email address.
Okay.
I will, I will confirm tomorrow, but the fact that you didn't receive an agenda, and that I did contact all the liaisons, you would have automatically received one to your city email account. So having not received one, then I would assume this is the off month. But I will confirm that first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and before we close for the evening, planning commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? And we'll start with you, Commissioner Adams.
Matt, one question on that. Did you, is there any coming up on local coastal program, or is it non-coastal-related items you mentioned?
There are some that may be coastal. Our components are in coastal, require an LCPA.
Okay, all right. As far as other comments, I don't have any other comments, just I'm glad to be here.
Nice to have you here. Commissioner Kennedy?
So I was not sure when I would implement this little bit of a talk track, but I wanted to commend the planning department for, when I was reading the documents, it seemed to be very comprehensive in regards to a lot of detail, all the way down to the storm requirements, the hydraulics, the sewer studies, the Phase 2 environmental report. I mean, it felt like, if you're going to build in Huntington Beach, there's going to be a pretty adherent roadmap, and I was really glad to see that. So I don't know if this is something I should have done when we had Ricky here and everybody else, so you can tell me where I can place that. But I was impressed with the amount of detail in the documents that you guys provided, and the amount of requirements for the builders to adhere to. So that made me feel good about the department and the way you guys basically create this track for building, so, good job.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and I'll be sure to relay that to Ricky.
Is that something I would do during a meeting, or is this for after the meeting? Because it may come up again.
We'll never stop you from complimenting staff, but anytime, really, but we appreciate it, the feedback.
And one last question. So I had some other questions that could have been directed. I thought we were going to go through segments, so next time, any question I may have when I'm talking, I should just come out with whatever it may be. I had some parking questions, and, you know, the numbers were conflicting. One said 58, one said 62, little things like that. I just wanted to hear a little bit what they've said about that. But moving forward, once we talk, I should just go through my laundry list. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, and I can talk offline after the meeting, give you some more clarification.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Twining?
Thank you.
Commissioner Wood?
Just a friendly reminder, make sure you ask the speakers your names when they come up to the podium. I thought it was a good meeting, and again, thanks staff for the good staff report, and hopefully we'll all get better at this as we go along.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Chair Pelman for allowing me to be on the Environmental Sustainability Board, and I also wanted to thank city staff and the taxpayers for allowing me to go to the Planning Commissioners Academy this week, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Costa Galvin?
No comments.
Okay, and I just wanted to thank everybody, and whoever made the stuff work for electronics, I wanted to thank you very, very much, everybody who had a hand in that. And I guess, I should read that this is the last item on the agenda, and we are hereby adjourned to the next Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. There we go.